To order the Arvada City Council meeting for December 2nd, 2019. Call upon Kristin Rush for the... First of all, we'll do a moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance. Councilmember John Marriott.
Would you please join me in a moment of silent reflection? And now, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now, I'll call upon Kristin Rush.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes of November 11th and 18th. Any changes or corrections? Seeing that none are requested, that will stand approved as presented. Next, we have recognitions and communications. I'll call upon Councilmember David Jones.
Thank you. Well, this is kind of a cool opportunity to provide this recognition to something that I found very interesting and kind of cool. It kind of reminded me of if you've ever been to Disney World and you go to Epic or Epcot and you go through that and it's got all these different things of changing and showing farming and all of this stuff. It kind of reminded me of that when I was watching the videos. But I... Are we going to do the video first? Are we going to... Is there... Are we doing a video? So, why don't we show the video and then I'll go to the... to the recognition.
There is so much work ahead of us.
Do you like those home improvement shows with the super cool makeovers? From this to this, this to this, and this to this?
Let's get her done.
Gina and Rodman Schley have a show on PBS called Urban Conversion. And guess where they're filming season three? Arvada. They found the perfect property near 74th and Kipling for an eco-friendly transformation.
This three acres is the last three acres of what was originally a 300-acre wheat farm. So, the history, the agricultural history in this property runs deep.
With a 1949 farmhouse still standing. It's about sustainability, the indoor system to heat the oak floors, the toilets, the fireplace, all designed with conservation in mind.
Arvada Economic Development Association has supported this show because it truly brings Arvada into the light of what this city stands for.
Which we think is an incredible opportunity to really put Arvada on the map.
Well, this is the city's Arvada reservoir.
An impressive tour of the city's water treatment plant gave them ideas on how to irrigate their stunning flower garden.
It's got a great fragrance to it. It tastes kind of peppery.
And when they harvest lavender and other beauties, you can buy them in town. Have you ever seen the Rose Roots Community Garden in northwest Arvada?
I wanted space for my kids to roam around and dig in the dirt and learn some of those skills and... But we didn't have space. So, I called the city of Arvada and asked them, "Hey, can we use this open space land to, you know, maybe make a community garden?" And they said yes.
Gina started it 10 years ago. Their new adventure is next level, taking viewers nationwide on a renovation ride, showcasing Arvada along the way.
That's... I mean, awesome. And so, Rodman and Gina Schley, producers of Urban Conversion, season three in Arvada. The Urban Conversion show is nationally syndicated in several hundred markets, in addition to creating awareness of community agricultural. So, the show reflects our community in a very positive manner, excuse me. And it just goes to show Rodman and Gina's genuine love for our city. And we're so glad that you're here and are true ambassadors of our city. We really appreciate you bringing this show to everyone's awareness and really, I think, as Daniel said, putting Arvada on the map as it relates to some of the ideas and some of the innovations that you'll have as you go through the show. But in recognition, the city of Arvada presents the certificate of recognition to Rodman and Gina Schley, Urban Conversion, signed by the mayor and all members of council, presented the second day of December 2019. I'll bring this down. And if you'd like to come to the podium and say a few things, that would be awesome.
So, thank you for this. This is... This is awesome. You know, when we get up in the morning, we don't... We don't do what we do expecting these type of things, but we're always appreciative of them, of course. It's so great to be a part of the city of Arvada. We've been here since the early 2000s, all kind of in that same area, that Rose Roots area that we were around, over 72nd a little bit. But we found this opportunity to expand our urban agriculture opportunities with that three-acre farm. Like we said in the video, that used to be an incredible 300-acre wheat farm at one time. And it was in unincorporated Jefferson County. And as the city grew, of course, it came out and annexed those areas. And that was the last remaining three acres of what used to be that 300-acre wheat farm. So, when that opportunity came up for us with what we do with agriculture and what we like to do with agriculture, it was just something we couldn't pass up. And so, we just love the opportunity to be able to enhance what we're doing in Arvada. The city of Arvada has been extremely good to us, whether we were shooting a show or whether we were building at Rose Roots or whether we were building a home. Every step along the way, the city of Arvada has been tremendous to us. So, every little bit that we're able to give back, we're so thankful. So thankful for everything that you guys have done.
They are truly great ambassadors for Arvada. We appreciate that so much. Okay, next, we have public comment on issues not scheduled on the agenda. I don't have anybody signed up. Are there any individuals that would like to address city council at this time on matters that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. We have a few items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of approximately $168,000 excluding applicable tax to Oracle America for the purchase of Oracle software update licenses and support provided in the support service number. And that's the only item we have on the consent agenda tonight. Mr. Marriott?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I move that Resolution R-19-121 be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes cast. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have some resolutions. The first is a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Adams County, Colorado, and the cities of Arvada, Brighton, Commerce City, Federal Heights, North Glenn Thornton, Westminster, and the town of Bennett for sharing the cost of a census liaison position in Adams County. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a resolution that we're joining with our jurisdictions in Adams County to facilitate the census complete count committee. It's a minor cost at only $500, but it also cements collaboration countywide to make sure that we do the best we can to get a complete count as part of the Adams County effort. We're also, of course, working with Jefferson County. We're recommending approval of the resolution.
Okay, any questions or requests? Ms. Ford?
I'd like to make a motion.
You may proceed.
No questions. I move that R-19-122, a resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between Adams County, Colorado, and the cities of Arvada, Brighton, Commerce City, Federal Heights, North Glenn Thornton, Westminster, and the town of Bennett for sharing the cost of a census liaison position in Adams County. Be approved.
Motion's for approval. Mr. Marriott, have you voted... I may have blocked you out. Wish I could do that all the time, but I can't. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. You know, this is so important and I appreciate Ben Irwin's work on behalf of the city in terms of what we're doing with the census. And you're going to be hearing from us over and over between now and through April, probably May, June, whenever the final numbers are tallied. But we really want to get a good count, not just for Arvada, but for all of Colorado, because it's really going to impact both the dollars that we get from the federal government, that we get our fair share, but it could also have an impact upon our representation in Congress. So, it's going to be crucial that we really do a good job and that everybody fills out their census forms. Next, we have a resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement between the city of Arvada and the Old Town Arvada Business Improvement District for the fiscal year 2020 programs and services in Old Town Arvada. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Old Town Business Improvement District, or BID, has continued to follow their operating plan and continued to do a very good job in managing the Business Improvement District for Old Town. As you recall, we had a presentation to council back in July of 2019 where we provided you and the BID provided you with an update. And as a result of that, we have finalized a memorandum of agreement for council consideration. This memorandum of agreement summarizes the business relationship between the city and the BID, which will operate for one year through 2021. And the BID will be using city funds to support public improvement, public programs and services through enhanced maintenance, public safety, and event support. If you refer to the actual agreement itself, there's a couple of attachments. Attachment A outlines the terms and conditions which will continue the cooperative relationship between the city and the BID. There's a series of baseline services that the city is providing. And then, there's attachment C, which is the BID operating plan. All of this work has been put together in collaboration between the BID board and the city team. We have worked very closely with the BID executive director as well in putting this information together. As an example, the operating plan includes the BID's commitment to power wash sidewalks, upgrade and modernize the Old Town Square kiosk, lighting and other crime deterrent solutions to make Old Town as viable as possible. With all the work that has been... In consideration of all the work that's been put into this, the Arvada team recommends that council approve R-19-123 to authorize this memorandum of agreement for 2021.
Very good. Ms. Simpson, you're first.
If there are no questions, I would like to make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer?
I do have a question about the baseline services. Are they supposed to be performed by the BID or is it in joint with us? It was kind of unclear on that attachment because it says variety of work groups within each work system.
Yes.
So, I'm assuming the system are these individual groups. But one example, because we had a successful tree lighting, it says here that the trees would be lit by, I'm assuming, the BID. So, did the BID do that or did we do that, the city?
I... I'll answer the question, but I also need to let the council know that the BID actually has a presentation that they want to make, and I failed to follow the script. So, my apologies for that.
Okay.
Evidently, I have to work a little bit on the collaboration part here. The baseline services is actually what the city provides.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, we do have representatives of the BID here. And you've got a presentation you'd like to make. We'd love to hear it. First of all, congratulations on a very successful tree lighting ceremony Saturday night.
Thank you, and thank you for coming out. And all of you who came out and braved the cold with us. It was quite a chilly evening. But to answer some of your questions, most of the services, there's a baseline for the city, but then we partner a lot with different things, such as the tree lighting. It's one of the partnership opportunities. The activating the square is a partnership opportunity. And so, we do participate in manual labor and financially in those items as well. A couple of the things that I just wanted to highlight from this last year, we've been working really fast and furious, you know, as an organization starts to really gain traction. We've really tried to take advantage of each of the opportunities that we have had to highlight the business from the Business Improvement District's viewpoint, Old Town, and then also Arvada itself. We did our first Fat Tuesday March this year, which we will be continuing. We had a record year for our St. Patty's Day. And we've had a lot of events over the other that year as well. But then, the Gold Line opening, we tried to really bring in all the businesses. We had a very large participation of the local businesses doing specials during that Gold Line opportunity, as well as us working a lot to highlight that and bring in more marketing efforts. We've managed to get a lot more marketing out this year. Even on the radio today, I heard another deal for Lon-Yop, which I hope you all attend, which is on the 9th for our eggnog and cider contest and gingerbread contest, carriage rides and all that. But our focus has gone, includes all the events, but it's also really going towards marketing the area. We've partnered with a lot of organizations, including the Visitor Center and the Arvada Center, Festivals Commission, local businesses. We ended up partially hosting the Rocky Mountain Arch Top Festival with a local business. That was just a fabulous event that brought in a lot of people. And that's where we could provide a place for all the musicians to come and play. So, we didn't have to do, you know, most of the work, but we were great hosts for that kind of thing. We're trying to bring more of that into Old Town as well. We had a successful group of concierges come in from downtown Denver and fell in love with Old Town. And so, we're going to be doing that again as well, so that we are on the radar of people in Denver coming out into Arvada. So, there's a lot of events like that, as well as the non-sexy stuff, which we are really formalizing our processes through our bylaws, policies and procedures, formalizing some committees, working really hard with all of our partners, trying to improve communications, especially with Laz, with the parking structure and where employees should park, those kinds of things, as well as communications within the district, helping the businesses out, and also the core group, which we are very appreciative of having in Old Town as well. So, those are just kind of some of the highlights from this last year. Do you have any questions?
I don't see any questions. We appreciate your hard work. And I'll let Lauren make the motion.
I move that R-19-123, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of agreement between the city of Arvada and Old Town Arvada Business Improvement District for the fiscal year 2020 programs and services in Old Town Arvada be approved.
Motion's for approval. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. And I'd also like to say, we are really going to miss Jessica.
We are as well. Arvada's loss is Aurora's gain. Next, we have ordinances on first reading. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 19-045, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow... I'm reading a public hearing. Let me just start that right over again. I move that Council Bill 19-049, an ordinance repealing or reenacting section 74-31, land use fees of Article II, Community Development Department Service Fees of Chapter 74, Planning and Development of the Arvada City Code, and Council Bill 19-050, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2019, and Council Bill 19-051, an ordinance approving a license agreement between the County of Jefferson and the city of Arvada for the installation and use of a potable water fill station. All be approved on first reading. Order published in full and public hearing be set for December 16th, 2019 at 6:15 PM.
Motion's to approve on first reading. All votes cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to public hearings. I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19045, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for a child daycare facility in a PUDI industrial zone district for the Goddard School, North Table Mountain, generally located at 12720 West 54th Drive. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Planning manager Rob Sumitano will introduce this item. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. As mentioned, this is a request for a conditional use permit approval to allow for a school facility and daycare on a 1.6-acre site. It is zoned PUDI for industrial. The site is located on 54th Drive, just west of Xenon Street in the Arvada Energy Center. The proposed building would be approximately 13,000 square foot in size with three outdoor play areas with the capacity for up to 204 children and 24 staff members. Although, a site plan is not required as part of the conditional use permit application. They did provide a conceptual site plan with the application that illustrates the proposed layout, including the building, parking, and access locations. Should they get approval tonight, they will move forward with a very similar plan. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the conditional use permit at their October 22nd meeting. We have received the signposting log and the mailing affidavit, and they are in order. And the applicant is in attendance for a presentation and questions. And I'm available for any questions of staff.
Posting log and affidavit will be made part of the record. Anyone who wishes to testify in this matter, if you'd raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony given. These proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. You may give us your presentation.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to come and talk to you guys about our hopeful project. So, it's just a Goddard school, and this will be a pretty...
If you could identify who you are and your address.
Oh, yes, sorry. Dan Resnick, R-E-S-N-I-C-K. And my address is 1901 Sage Circle in Golden, 80401. So, pretty quick presentation tonight. Rob kind of went through everything for you guys, but I'll go over it again. So, the school is on West 54th, just west of Ward and Xenon Street in Arvada. So, it's a roughly 13,000 square foot school with, give or take, 11,000 square feet of fenced play area, two play structures. I think our total now is closer to 196 kids at full capacity with 24 staff. As you can see, open regular business hours, 7 to 6, Monday through Friday, and then closed weekend and holidays. So, this is a general site plan of our lot. The building's right on the kind of left side of the big green area. To the west side of the building, we have residential. So, we have put up some full fenced areas to kind of help with visual and sound, which were some concerns during our neighborhood meetings. We also put up a lot more trees to help with that as well. Parking's on the east side. And then, as you can see, on the south side of the building is the play areas. And this is kind of the fence that we will go with, kind of visually appealing, and will help control that sound for neighbors and make sure that they're not, you know, hearing too much. So, the main height of the building is at 18 feet. The tallest point, as you can see, it comes to that peak, is around 25 foot four inches. That does not expand the whole length of the building. It only expands about 2/3 of the building. So, on the backside of the building, it's kind of just roughly that 18-foot You know, we went through site selection. The demographics are great in the area. I actually have a toddler and have been looking for daycares for a while, and everything's booked up in the area. So, the demand is there. You know, there's a lot of new developments going in. And actually, being right off of Ward, we're in a cul-de-sac, so it's kind of a safe pickup and drop-off area, not on too busy of a street, not too much traffic coming here and there. And we're kind of, like I said, in the cul-de-sac, so there's only one way in, one way out, kind of safe and secure area for kids and to have a school. So, we did have a couple neighborhood meetings. The first one, it was mainly parking, traffic, and noise that were the concerns, but we were able to mitigate that in a follow-up meeting. We did additional traffic studies. We talked to neighbors about what we could do to make things work with them. That's where more trees came in and that solid fence. And that's pretty much it.
Could you go back to that, to the location map in terms of where you are?
Oh, this one, sorry.
Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes, yes.
Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. Ms. Miller, you're first.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I saw that this was addressed a little bit during the planning meeting, but thoughts on pickup and drop-off and about 100 cars going down a cul-de-sac all at the same time? And what are your thoughts on how to manage that traffic with the office complex that's right down the street there and all those cars arriving at the same time?
Right. So, we did a second traffic study for those roads and figured out that at peak, which is between 5:00 and 6:00 PM, when we'd have the most amount of cars in and out. And this is also given at 100% capacity, which wouldn't happen for a few years. I would... I mean, I don't think it would happen for at least three years to get to 100% capacity. But at that peak, it would only add 2.32 cars per minute. So, it still has a very little impact to the flow of traffic right there. Also, with traffic at the school, it's very... It's not as time-sensitive as a normal office building, where everybody comes in at 8:00 and everybody leaves at 4:00 or 5:00. We get pickups and drop-offs throughout the day. So, it gets a little bit more spread out throughout the day as well. So, that kind of mitigates the traffic concerns. And it's not like 100 cars will show up at 4:00 PM when school's out. You could have 10 cars then, 10 cars at 4:30, and it kind of spreads out throughout the hour.
Thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes. So, you noted the fence, which is designed to mitigate light and noise pollution. Given that this area is zoned as industrial, I just want to verify for the record that there's nothing in the area that creates air pollution that could impact the children.
No, the other people in that cul-de-sac in that business center aren't like big manufacturers. There might be a semi truck here and there for deliveries, but that's nothing different than, you know, if we were on Ward, for example, with trucks going by way more consistently.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess the concerns I would have, and maybe you've answered this, is, you know, it looks like you've got 30 parking spaces, but you're going to have 100, 150 kids there maybe at a time, although you said that the pickups and drop-offs happen over time. I imagine at 2 to 6 years old, they're all going to be park and pickup. There's not kind of a pull-in pause lane. So, are you confident you have enough capacity to handle that and that cars won't end up stacked up back into the cul-de-sac if there's not enough either parking spaces in your parking lot or enough area for them to, you know, enough flow, circulation for them to get in and to get out?
Right, right. Good question. So, the city recommends or requires us to have 36 spots, and we have 40. So, we're already exceeding that portion of it. And once again, this is all based on 100% capacity. So, the teachers, for example, will not be... All be there at the same time. It's kind of more like a restaurant. When there's a rush, more servers come in. When we have more kids, there will be more teachers there. So, there will be more... So, as kids leave, teachers leave, which opens up more parking. And same in the morning, as kids come in, there will be a little bit more, you know, parking for staff. But either way, I don't think... I brought a Goddard representative here who can also help talk about this, but I don't think there will be an issue with parking or overflow into the cul-de-sac at all.
Do you have any kind of a contingency, any kind of a plan if it was to become a problem? What's your options if it is a problem?
Yeah, I think first options are just to promote carpooling with staff. I think we can either do carpooling with staff or maybe set up an Uber, Lyft program within the company to help pay for their travel expenses. Also, there is a neighbor next to us, Linco, which is the building just east of us, and they have a lot of additional parking that they have put in. And we've been... parking that they have put in, and we've been talking to them about if it ever became an issue, we could rent parking spots from them. And then, and then I think just carpooling with parents as well.
Have they indicated that they would do that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, how about, from an operational standpoint, do you have the ability to have a traffic monitor out there to direct people or, you know, help, help the process through? Is that something that operationally the Goddard School can, can do if that becomes a problem?
Oh, Brian is a representative from Goddard with me, with, and I don't, I'm not an owner yet, so I don't know exactly the, how everything works, but he'll probably be able to answer that question for you.
Right.
Hi, thank you for the questions. Brian Johnston, one-oh-one-six West Ninth Avenue, King of Prussia, Pennsylvania, Site Development Manager for Goddard. All of these options are on the table. There would be, at full capacity, as Dan said, not just the teachers that are in the school themselves, but we have an onsite owner, which would be Dan, plus a director, and some floating teachers that could help with some, you always have to maintain ratio. So, if one teacher has to use a restroom or something, there's fill-ins for, that are available to fill those spaces. Those extra staff could be used as a parking monitor, and that would be an arrangement that Dan would be able to, you know, facilitate whenever the school is open. Another point to make is even at full capacity, we usually see system-wide about ten to fifteen percent attrition on a given day from absentees for vacation or sickness, as well as siblings, so maybe two students per car at some point. So, it is rarely system-wide an issue when it comes to the, the, even at full capacity. Goddard nationwide has five-hundred schools open, and we get this question all the time, and it's, we see the same concerns, but the same mitigation processes in, in place.
Okay. So, let me ask you a question. Let me just follow that up with something. Is the, and, and Brian, or Dan, you might actually be the one to answer this, or both of you. The, the city requires a certain amount of parking. Is that, from Goddard's recommendation, from the school's recommendation, is that enough? Is that more than necessary, or, or do you need more than that? Because I do notice you are building more than you're required to. Is that because through your experience oper- in operating one of these, that, that the right number is more than what the city requires?
Generally speaking, yes. It all is based on capacity, as, as you mentioned. Our, our, our model is one space per staff and two per classroom. And so, that is very consistent with what we're presenting here. And, you know, the fact that we are under the, or over the required limit is, is also a, a bonus for our sake as well. Having those extra spaces is obviously gonna help. But we never see an issue with this. Nationwide, we don't run into an issue. Our model is built to handle full capacity, and so as Dan said, that's a rarity. Even at, even three or four years down the road, you might see ninety-eight, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. But even at full capacity, our system is, our model is built to handle full-capacity parking.
Okay. Well, I would hope you'd achieve full capacity, and the sooner the better. So, let me ask you, let me ask another question then about traffic from another, another perspective. I think your neighbors there, is it Melander White and Interstate Electrical Distributors that are, that are your two closest neighbors? And I'm not exactly sure what Melander White does in their building. Do you know, do they have semi-truck deliveries? Do they bring materials and supplies in and out, or is that purely just office space for them?
I think that one's just purely office space. I think they're more of a design firm.
Okay. But Interstate Electrical, though, is not. They're, they have, you know, traffic flow based on their industrial application. Have you sat down and spoken one-on-one with them about, here's what, I know you had a public meeting, but, but them being the, the closest to you, you know, little, literally sharing less than ten feet between the edges of your driveways, with them about, you know, how, how is this gonna work for you versus how it's gonna work for us?
They were at a public meeting, uh, hearing, but we did not, I mean, we spoke through that vessel, but haven't sat down and, and talked one-on-one.
And did they have any specific concerns about their ability to continue to, to operate the way they operate, which is semi-trucks in and out, service trucks in and out, you know?
Right.
Lots of deliveries, lots of shipments, lots of-
Their, their concerns were more safety for the kids and security reason, or protocol for Goddard, but everything's fenced in on the Goddard side. Kids aren't just running around outside in the parking lot or anything like that.
Right.
So, that, that was more their concern. They didn't really have a big concern of, of traffic, at least that they didn't bring up at that meeting.
Right.
But I haven't sat down one-on-one with them.
Do you have any concerns with if their business model were to change and the amount of activity there were to double or triple or quadruple, and, and, and the amount of industrial traffic there were to become more significant than it is today? As the owner of a, of a, of a school or daycare, would you have concerns with that? Is there anything in the future you would look to them and be worried about happening with that industrial property?
I don't, I don't think so. You know, even if they had a few more trucks coming in daily, it wouldn't disturb the school too much. I think most of their, you know, I've been visiting the land and just watching the community for a few months now, and kind of monitoring what's going on in these roads. And I've seen a couple trucks, maybe, maybe, you know, every other week. Like, it's, it's not a daily occurrence. It's not four trucks a day, five trucks a day. So, I think even if they were to expand and become bigger, I don't think it would impact, impact at least the school.
If in the future that industrial building were to be sold, and, you know, my hope would be Interstate Electrical would get too big for that building and move to a bigger place in Arvada, and that building were to become available, if that were to become a Amazon delivery hub that housed forty vans that delivered packages throughout the community, would you have concerns about that?
Yeah. I think at that point, it'd be a question of whether or not any new use would still fall under the light industrial confines. Light industrial, by definition, is that a very minimal amount of impact is permitted for adjacent properties. At that point, it would be a question of whether or not that exceeds that minimal amount.
Okay. So, you hit on, on exactly where I'm trying to go with this, I guess, and that's, you know, you hear the stories of the people who move in next to an airport and complain about the noise, and, you know, move, the concern I would have is moving a school and a daycare into an industrial area, light industrial or industrial, and then having problems with the industrial activity that happens around the spot you moved into. And, and I, I guess I would, I'd like some assurance that, that, that that won't be the case, that everything that may be allowed under the existing zoning, so not a conditional use or, or a different zoning then is there now, but that everything that would be allowed there now, that you're okay with that, that you're not moving next to the airport and then gonna complain about the noise, that, that you've looked at every possibility and said, yeah, we, we're fine with all that. That's, that's maybe what I'm looking for.
During the site selection process, you know, Dan would work with our real estate team and, and get that level of comfort. And then, once it gets to my department, we also, you know, investigate and get that level of comfort as well. There are other Goddard Schools that are in light industrial. We never put one in a, in a non-light industrial park. As far as deliveries, once in a while, I think that that's fine. We've done as good a job as we can with the space we've been given to shield the, the playgrounds from the, um, the rest of the cul-de-sac area by, you know, through the buil- placement of the building and the playgrounds. Additionally, the children are only outside. It's one classroom at a time, and they're only out twenty to thirty minutes at a time as well. I think with all of that being said, I think there, you know, there certainly was a comfort level from our standpoint to, to locate this building where it is, and I don't believe Dan would be standing up here if there was any lack of comfort at his side as well.
Right. Dan, you wanna take a swing at that one for us, too?
Yeah, I was gonna say, just to reiterate that, you know, I found the spot, brought it to Goddard's attention. They did their due diligence on it while I was doing mine. I think if they ever had a concern, then the concern would be brought up to me, and then I'd, you know, work on that and see if I felt comfortable. From the beginning, I've never really had a concern about, about this area. I personally think it's a perfect spot for a school. I know, I know with the term light industrial and, and the things that can go in there might push other people away, but I think, I think it works out perfectly. I know just up the street from us, a two-acre lot right there is gonna be personal warehouses. So, it's just gonna be kind of a storage unit for, for private use. So, I don't think there's gonna be, there's gonna be very little impact on the school and any of the other businesses from those two spots, and that, those are kind of the last two spots that are available in that area or in that cul-de-sac road. So, so I personally think, I have no concerns, and I, and I'm also not the person to raise concerns if, if a little more noise comes into the area that's not, I mean, you're, you're, I'm buying into an industrial, a light industrial area. I kind of have to know what could go there, just like if you're residential, buying near an airport, you kind of have to know what's gonna happen.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Thanks for answering those questions. I appreciate it.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
So, my question about the traffic is, not on the afternoon, it's in the morning. Actually, I think there's a bigger problem in the morning than there is in the afternoon. As you, you may or may not know, but Drake Middle School's buses used to go down to Fifty-Second and turn right, but it created so much traffic on Ward and, and the cross streets that they started diverting down this road. Their school starts, what, seven-thirty, I think? So, the buses start coming through at seven A M. And then, then it's just logged all the way back in there.
Right.
So, what is your concerns, or what is your, how are you gonna deal with adding to the morning congestion for the school that's less than a block away from you?
Right. So, so we, we did do that second traffic study that, that showed that at capacity, we wouldn't be adding more than about two cars per minute, two-point-three cars per minute. And that's during the high times, which the highest point, like I said earlier, was between five and six P M. Drop-off, you know, starts at seven A M., but I think, Brian could help answer this. I think, uh, the main, the main timing of drop-off for a Goddard School is between eight and nine. That's our high time, which is obviously after the seven-thirty start time for, for Drake. So, I don't think, you know, will there be cars on the road? Yeah, I think there will, but I, you know, I don't think it'll be too bad of an impact that, you know, will cause a huge, huge traffic.
Yeah, we already have a problem there, and I just don't wanna add to it because it's outside of the city. It's just right on our city limits, but it's, a lot of our residents' kids go to that school, and we already have a traffic nightmare in that area. So, if you're saying your peak time is between eight and nine, how many of those students usually show up between eight and nine? I mean, you say two per minute or whatever, but what are, how many?
I don't have the exact numbers on that with me, but I know that we look at locating a, a Goddard School near a elementary or junior high or high school as an asset rather than a liability. A lot of the students that will be at that school may have younger brothers or sisters that would be a part of the Goddard School as well, which doesn't add to the traffic. It just adds an extra stop along the way. The rolling start time is, is deliberate so that, as Dan said earlier, we don't have a set start time that will force all the cars there at one time. It's based more on demand by the parents or the caregivers. As they, as their schedule allows, they will arrive and drop their kids off. Again, I think it's, I, I, we, we appreciate the concern. That's why we did the extra traffic study. And me, beyond that, I'm not sure what else we can show that we saw, beyond the numbers and just what our system allows for, because this certainly isn't the only school that we've done that's in, in this sort of situation. And we've, we've been able to mitigate everything along the way that we've been a good neighbor and, and an asset to the community rather than a liability.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Um, so, just a couple of questions, and obviously, all the questions have been around traffic and traffic volume. And I had a question about Drake as well, because I know that that, a lot of parents are starting to use that road as well as a cut-through and dropping their kids off, and they're running across the street. In fact, I think there's a high school student that's doing a, a project or some kind of traffic study on their own as a project, so, at Drake. My question really is about the events or the graduations, or the, the things that are bringing the cars there for a period of time that include grandmas and grandpas and aunts and uncles. Do you have those types of graduation events that other preschools or schools like this do, and where would-
It's possible. Based on the concerns of the neighborhood, it would be up to Dan to schedule those at an off-peak time, such as evenings after the working day would be done, or on a weekend for that matter. It isn't a common occurrence. It would maybe be a hand, like a few times a year at most. It's not something we necessarily stray away from, but it's not something we, we try to promote because we understand the sensitivities to the surrounding community as well.
Sure.
We don't want it to be just a free-for-all around these, around the buildings, obviously.
Yeah, no, and I get it, and I know that, you know, those are events, those types of events are important, you know, for the kids, for whatever reason they might be. But I was, my, my question maybe is for staff on that road. How is that road, is it, can it be, can cars park on each side of the road? Is it single park on one side? So, if, if they do have an event, where are people gonna park up and down the road? Because they're not obviously gonna be able to handle them inside the property.
Right. On the particular cul-de-sac there, is parking allowed? However, with all the drive cuts that are there, there's limited space. So, if they were gonna to have a event like that, they would need to have overflow parking for that location.
And so, my sense is it'd probably flow off of Fifty-Fourth Drive. And so, what does it look like on Xenon? Is that, is that the name of the street there?
Yeah, Xenon. And there, again, there are some, some areas where there can be some on-street parking, but there are curb cuts along there, too, that would limit that amount.
And so, and still allow traffic each way?
Yes, that's actually built to our industrial local standard, which is a slightly larger street cross-section.
All right. Thank you. That's all I-
And one additional point to answer you there. The, it's, it's not, it wouldn't be the full capacity of the school if there were an event necessarily, you know, maybe on occasion, but if there were something of a graduation or something like that, it would be a, a much more limited amount of, of cars, to the point where our parking lot, it's, there's a good chance that the entire parking lot would be full, but it would be able to handle the, the additional.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, Brian, I had a, a question. In terms of your other schools that are in light industrial areas, have you seen any differences in enrollment between schools that are in more residential settings?
I personally haven't. The schools are located to not necessarily be a destination, but to be located along the way for a residential community to get to where their, you know, place of work is. Our position on the traffic is, is just that, is that we're, we're capturing the traffic that is already moving in that direction and just creating a different stop along the way for them. In terms of how that's affected by a residential versus industrial, or light industrial, I should say, I don't see, I, I don't have numbers available to me that, that support one or the other being better or worse. I mean, I know whenever we have a full residential location, obviously, traffic is, is a, a much bigger issue because you have residents that may not be going to work that would have, have to navigate around those cars coming in and out at different times of the day, not just at the eight and the five, for example.
And, Rob, I didn't have a chance to visit this site. Can you please tell me, there are a lot of empty properties, it looks like to me. I'm looking at the Page Two map in the staff report. So, for example, below this site is a residential site, and there's nothing on it at the moment. Is, is there anything planned for that at, at this time?
Not that we're aware of. That's actually in, in Incorporated County, but it is a school facility, and that's the, the play area. It's, uh, just developmentally disabled. I forget what the name of the actual nonprofit that operates it is, but they've always operated that as a school yard in relation to the school building.
And then, what about the piece of property that's to the east? I'm assuming that's to the east?
Yes, that's the Linco property that was mentioned. So, there is a building that will be constructed there. It has been approved. So, there will be a light industrial building. It's primarily just a contractor's building.
And then, what about the properties that are to the north, I guess? Is that to the north? Uh, the, there's three of them, right next to the large complex that's right north of the site?
Yeah, so maybe, uh, the easiest is directly north is the Interstate Electric Building. Just to the east of that or to the right is Meli- Melander White. The next one over is still vacant. We don't have any site pla- The next one over is still vacant. We don't have any site plan on that. The next two are the personal warehouses that were mentioned, uh, and then the one where you can see some grading on the site. That's, uh, at the Hestra Building that just was completed.
And then, um, Ryan, I have a question for you. In terms of this site, uh, being a light industrial site, in terms of its value for the city in, uh, capturing, uh, commercial interests, uh, how valuable is this site?
I, it, it, it's a fair question. Um, we have a limited, uh, number of light industrial sites across the city and so, um, given our very low vacancy rate for industrial and commercial property across the city, um, there's demand for, um, light industrial property. That being said, um, that demand needs to coincide with the types of businesses that want to go into each one of those areas. These sites have been vacant for the past fifteen years or so as they've been marketed i- in this and, and they haven't um, been full up yet. So we always take the long approach and we always want more jobs and, and good jobs and I'm, I'm sure that these will be um, good jobs as well and also provide services, uh, to the workforce that is, is also important to us. But, uh, it's a fair point to say that, uh, we have a limited amount of light industrial space and so, um, uh, having it to be able to attract, uh, additional light industrial businesses and more jobs over time is important.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna follow up on, on Ms. Ford's questions. In terms of, um, how many sites are still available on these properties? And is it all in common ownership or are they all individually owned?
They're, they're all under, mostly under individual ownership and I
Under a single ownership?
Uh, no, they're all individual, yeah. Um, I believe the only two that are now, well, there's three. Uh, there's the one just to the uh, east of Melander White, uh, the one on the south side of Xenon on the curve there, the, the pie-shaped piece. And then one more parcel, one additional parcel, sorry, on, uh, Fifty-Fourth and Ward on the south side, south of Hestra. Everything else in the, in that area is, uh, under development.
Okay. And then, um, either for the applicant or for our team, trying to get out from Fifty-Fourth Avenue to go northbound on Ward Road is nearly impossible. Um, what, uh, what's your traffic studies show in terms of people wanting to go northbound on Ward as, as they come back out from this property?
Our traffic study actually showed the opposite, that most people would be coming from the north, going south, taking a right and then a right off of Fifty-Fourth onto Ward.
How about going home?
What?
How about going home?
I think on the, it would, they would probably take a left onto, uh, Fifty-Second and then come up Xenon. Um, if they couldn't do the left onto Fifty-Fourth, uh, I've been driving that, that road at random hours just to test it out as, as much as possible over the last six months. Yes, it does produce some kind of, uh, issue, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's impossible. I think there's, there's plenty of, of, you know, I've, I've never waited more than about thirty seconds to make the left from Fifty-Fourth going north on Ward. Um, but that's my
That's your experience?
It's my experience. I'm sure other people have.
If I can, Mayor.
Yes.
Ultimately, that is, uh, proposed to have some intersection improvements at Fifty-Fourth and Ward and it, that would restrict the left out to, uh, northbound.
So you could not turn left?
Correct. It'll be a three-quarter intersection once those improvements are done.
Fair enough. Mr. Pfeifer?
Well, being that I just lived on Ward on Fifty-Sixth and Ward, I would completely argue different than what you just said about thirty seconds. I'm talking ten, fifteen minutes just to turn southbound. His business is on the corner of Fifty-Sixth and Ward as well and I'm sure he experiences the same thing. So let's be realistic to the parents. One, let's not encourage them to jump in front of that street and get killed. I see accidents there way too often, so just war- warning you and your parents, it's, that's not a smart move, so I would not encourage that at all.
Do, do we have some sense of how soon those, that intersections could have changed? I see Ryan indicating no.
I'm not, I'm not sure the exact timing, but we have been collecting a fee for, uh, the developments that are occurring there now to help fund that improvement up, but I don't know where that is in terms of the actual improvement.
Okay, fair enough. I see no other questions. I'm ready for city council, uh, action. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill nineteen dash zero four five, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for a child daycare facility in a PUDI industrial zone district for the Goddard School, North Table Mountain General, located at one two seven two zero West Fifty-Fourth Drive. Be approved on final reading number four seven one six and ordered published by title only.
Mr.?
Speak to this motion?
Yes, you may.
So, um, I will be supporting this. At first I had some hesitation with the traffic, but, um, you did a great job presenting that traffic patterns ni- eight to nine, it's, it's later than drop off. I loved what you said about, you know, being an asset to Drake instead of a liability. When it comes to commercial, I completely agree with Councilmember Ford with the, um, commercial property being less and less. I was a business waiting to move back into Arvada for for a couple of years before I finally found a spot. But I also believe, um, wholeheartedly that a business owner that owns a piece of land should be able to do what he wants on that piece of land as long as it's within the development code, so I will be supporting the motion.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I think this is an interesting, um, development because it's a, a conditional use that's essentially lighter than the, than the zoning that's around the area. Normally, we would see a conditional use that's the opposite. Um, and so it brings up for me a whole different set of, uh, of concerns, um, than a typical conditional use permit would do. Um, you know, rezonings into an existing area and conditional use permits, I think require us to take a, a good look at these things carefully. And, and so I'm a little bit leery about this one for a couple of things, not so much for the traffic. I think you've answered that and I think this works okay for that and I think you have, most importantly, operationally, some options if, if there were to be issues once you're up and running, whether it's, uh, leasing parking from your neighbor or, or, or using, um, manpower to operate your parking differently. So I, I think you've got options there and so I don't really have that concern. My bigger concern is kind of where my line of questioning was, it's the moving next to the airport and then being mad that there's an airport there. Um, and so I have, I have some concerns about, um, this type of usage in an industrial area that while the surrounding buildings today may not give you any problems with, with, um, your operation, they can change and they can change to other things that are allowed within that zoning and, uh, and, and, you know, I being comfortable with that is important. So I think, you know, the, the, the public meeting provided some, uh, insight into that, some, um, you know, there was not a lot of concerns about that. Uh, I think your neighbors, uh, weren't concerned at the public meeting. I think the planning commission looked into it, um, fairly thoroughly and, and, uh, and I think they did a real good job, um, kind of vetting this proposal from that standpoint too, so that's another piece of, uh, piece of evidence and so you know, I, I, I'm gonna be okay with it and I'm gonna vote yes. Um, and, and I, I think you, I think you're gonna be just fine. I just want you to be also have your eyes wide open about what the future could bring for you. Um, and to, as you develop both your, your, your site a- as well as your, your business, your operations, that you think in terms of not just what happens around your walls. I think you've made a good, duh, made some good choices with those solid fencing and things to protect your customers, but, but that you think outside those walls and think about, well, if this building were to change into anything else that's allowed, what would we do? How, how would we handle that and, and, uh, um, you know, plan, plan for that because things in the future can and will change. So I think, I think based on, uh, the work you've done, um, the, the public meeting, the, the planning commission meeting, I'm going to support this, um, and I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Um, so I'd just like to say, you know, thank you for your entrepreneurial spirit and, and being willing to take a risk. Um, because it is, it is a bit risky to go into business and, and, uh, to, to take those kinds of chances, especially, you know, in an area like that. I think that what plays well into your success is the fact that Drake Middle School is right there. And I guess the hope is that people will be making just one extra stop on the way to, to work. Um, I, uh, you know, I was concerned about the traffic, but then as I thought about, um, there's a Goddard School, uh, just off of Indiana up in Candellas and it's right there in the Whisper Creek neighborhood. And I haven't gotten any feedback from any of the neighbors in that area, um, any negative feedback at all, um, about that Goddard School. And so my sense is, is that they've been a really good neighbor. Um, and my, and, and so kind of hearing from the Goddard School side, it sounds like that's part of your philosophy of, of being good neighbors. Um, and in fact, uh, you know, to, to Mr. Marriott's point about, you know, looking into the future, um, I know that that owner of that school, um, was involved and, and provided feedback into things that were going on, develop, other development that was going on around their school. And so um, I just appreciate the fact that, um, that you're willing to do that and will continue to, to kind of reach out to your neighbors and make sure that, you know, everybody knows who everybody is, but I, I, I applaud you for, uh, taking the risk and I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Simpson?
Um, well, first I want to thank you for coming here tonight and your patience. Uh, you got quite the grilling up here, which was kind of great. Um, I wanted to just come from a different perspective. Um, as a young mother, I am very recently familiar, my daughter is only three, with the desperate need we have for childcare, the waitlist that you are looking before your child is ever born and the panic that it causes a lot of families um, who aren't able to find quality childcare, um, from accredited, um, certified providers. So I just want to thank you for bringing more options to Arvada and I will also be supporting this.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to oppose, um, because I think that should be preserved as light industrial. It's a conditional use permit. Uh, it's not a use by right. Yes, I believe we need more daycare facilities. Yes, I think Goddard does an excellent job. Yes, I applaud the entrepreneurial spirit, but I think we've got to preserve light industrial for light industrial and not, um, permit some other use. Ms. Ford?
And I'm gonna agree with you, uh, Mayor. That is my major concern. Um, unlike what, um, Ryan or Rob mentioned, um, these types of schools typically do not pay, uh, high, uh, wages and, um, we have very little property here in Arvada for industrial. We do need jobs continually that are high-paying. And I feel that as a city, we've been chipping away at our industrial and light industrial areas and while I give you great amount of credit for your entrepreneurial spirit as well, um, I really feel that we should preserve our light industrial areas for light industrial. So I will be voting no.
Mr. Pfeifer?
And I too, I think I'll be voting no as well. I worry about, you could be good neighbors with Drake, but, uh, you're, you need to be, you need to be aware of the traffic, uh, more aware. I feel that, uh, sense of jumping out on Ward and and all the buses that use that road to get to school and there's already kids late to school all the time. I'm not sure how realistic that is and and I agree as well. Industrial and commercial and retail areas have to be preserved in our city for those purposes and that land use, so I will be voting no.
Okay, all votes are cast. No surprise. Passes on a four to three vote. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next to open the public hearing on Council Bill nineteen oh four six, an ordinance authorizing the Fifth Amendment to the two thousand and five intergovernmental agreement binding between the city of Arvada, Colorado and the Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number Two. Same time will be considering Resolution nineteen one twenty-four, a resolution rescinding Resolution oh two one oh four, a resolution allocating water supplies to new users, and R nineteen one two five, a resolution rescinding Resolution R seventeen oh two oh, increasing the allocation of water to the Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number Two. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Director of Community and Economic Development, Ryan Stachowski, will, uh, present this item and facilitate the discussion, uh, with the council.
Very good. Mr. Pfeifer, you had a preliminary?
Real quick, uh, online, the first two pages seem to be corrupt. I don't know if that's for you as well. You cannot see the summary sheets online, uh, to this hearing and therefore it's hard for me to make a decision up here, not having access to those two sheets. So if somebody can give us maybe ax- uh, make copies or something? Yeah, before we start?
Do you want to go? He's he's gonna go make photocopies. Just do
Maybe that's why some of us stick with paper copies.
Yeah, just do this.
Right?
Just do the Yeah. I need one as well. He, he's gonna get copies for everybody. Okay. Very good. Do you want me to start? Yes, go ahead. Okay. Um, well, I apologize for that, certainly, um, technical error. Starting back in, uh, twenty eighteen, in early twenty eighteen, the, the city of Arvada team started working in partnership with the Jefferson Center Metro District in which this IGA is, is with, uh, to better understand the market conditions that were driving both land use and the needed infrastructure in the region. And the central issue was that based on the approved outline development plan for the JCMD area, the Candellas area, um, there was, uh, minimum requirements for commercial and residential. The minimum requirements for, uh, commercial was seven seven point two million square feet of commercial and then there was, uh, proposed i- i- some additional three thousand or so, uh, residential housing units. These are, um, high-density housing units that would be part of structures in a town center, uh, kind of in the, in the center of, um, the Candellas area. And what was happening is that as new development, like the King Supers came in, we would be reviewing traffic studies and other things like that for the background, uh, traffic and other infrastructure needs that this level of commercial development was going to be causing. And what we found was that we were asking for increased levels of infrastructure needs that, uh, JCMD felt was beyond the scope of reality. Uh, for example, um, some of the background numbers that would be caused by this level of commercial and residential development uh, would require that Candellas Parkway add a third lane in each dire- or, a, a third lane so that there'd be three lanes in each directions. Additionally, the King Super Shopping Center, uh, created a three-turn lane requirement onto, from Indiana Street, turning west onto Candellas Parkway. And that was not necessarily based on the King Supers, uh, development, but all of the background traffic that was going, be generated by what was in the ODP. And that was the time that we needed to ask for the turn lane because you needed to get the right-of-way that would be dedication, dedicated in order to receive the turn. And so Candellas and JCMD started saying, hey, we're not exactly sure that when we did this original ODP that it is really balanced with what we think the future, uh, market conditions are going to be out here. We think that we've overestimated uh, what we believe those market conditions are going to be, but now that's coming to kind of bite us a little bit because you're requiring us to do infrastructure that's well beyond, uh, uh, what we think is needed at the cost of tens of millions of dollars. And so what, what we did was in partnership with JCMD, we said, okay, if you believe that this is out of balance with what we, we think reality is, we should study this. And so we partnered with Dr. Tom Thibodeau out of the University of Colorado in their Real Estate Center. And they had done an original market study in two thousand and seven and then they did an updated study in two thousand and eighteen in which they looked at both the residential demand and the commercial demand for the area. And the results of those studies looked at it, not just what the current market conditions were for today, but also what we believe that those market conditions were, uh, needed for the next twenty years as well. And what the, the study, uh, determined was that the area could support not seven point two million square feet of commercial, but more in the ballpark of one point two million square feet of commercial. And what that does is it dramatically, um, changes some of the background traffic and, um, data consistent with the, the road infrastructure and other types of infrastructure that were needed. So as a result of the conclusion of these reports, JCMD went and did a land use exercise and said, we want to reconsider or relook at what the ODP does in light of these market conditions. And so as, as the city team, we said, And so as, as the city team, we said, okay, you can look at that, but we want you to know that during this process, it is incredibly important that we have both commercial centers and town centers remain as the priority in that area. We are all well aware of city council's direction and quite frankly, the community's direction of needing more commercial services out in that area in order to create a town center and a place making for the Candela's and, and surrounding area folks. So they went forward with that and did a land use plan that was more consistent with what they felt that the market study was. In addition to that, we also said, you can't just look at the market viability of what, what the land use is saying. We also need you to consider other policy questions that were important. So these policy questions were, what would changes to the overall land use have on water allocation in the area? What would the changes to the ODP, the outline development plan have on local and regional infrastructure needs? And how could the city ensure the need and desire for a West Arvada Town Center to be realized? So these were additional important policy questions that we wanted to have a conversation about. To further that conversation with city council, several members of city council back in May were able to go on a tour of the Candela's area. And the point of the tour was to look at the different land use areas, the amount of land that we were talking about that was slated for commercial, what it would look like if 7.2 million square feet of commercial went to 1.2 million, how we would preserve that land, where the town center would be, how there'd be services for different businesses and residents in the area, and how would that other land be utilized? And so it was, the general consensus of city council at that time was to begin a process that would allow a phased approach to add some additional mixed use and residential development in Candela's that were subject to several guidelines that again, city council seemed to have general consensus on. And, and these guidelines were that the priority for city council is to encourage community develop, community, excuse me, commercial development in the area, which includes restaurants, retail, services, and jobs. That city council is open to considering some development of new residential, which is intended to support new commercial development. However, this development should not impede or preclude commercial development. As part of a phased approach, special expenses should be paid on preserving key locations to allow commercial development, including and with special attention towards the town center. And that a portion of water allocation to the JCMD Metro District, which is part of what we're discussing tonight, must be reserved to ensure its availability in the event that commercial development, including a town center, eventually does come. And so tonight's action is really the first step in that phased approach of having the conversation. What I look at this is, we're talking about water allocation tonight and right now there is a, a, a policy by ordinance in place that the city council says that the water that's allocated to JCMD can only be used for certain types of land uses, non-residential land uses. And the other part of the conversation about what land uses can be used in the Candela's areas is clearly the zoning and the ODP and, and what needs to be approved. And so in order to open up the conversation, to be able to have the phased approach at looking at different land uses in the Candela's area, we need to look at not having the water be a part of the restriction as to what is controlling the land use there. Say that the land, the, the water can be used as the market and as city council sees fit as per approved development plans through land use and not necessarily through the water allocation. So there's really two controlling things about land use. It's the water and the, and the zoning. It's kind of a belts and suspenders. This takes the suspenders off and allows you to just use the belt in order to control the land use and it opens up that conversation for flexibility. So we believe that city council has given us direction to want to have more of a conversation about different land uses in the area, and this is the first step in that direction. This step does not change any of the land use and it doesn't give any rezoning or ODP changes. It just frees up the conversation for future consideration of different land uses, should that be council's desire.
Okay, this is not quasi judicial. This is legislative in nature. So is, is there a representative from JCMD that wishes to address this on this matter?
Yes.
Okay, you may proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Greg Bradbury. I'm the treasurer, JCMD Two, that does receive the water allocation as partnering with the city on the whole JCMD 5,000, over 5,000 acres. We actually have a long history together. We annexed this roughly 5,000 acres and planned roughly 18,000 acres back in 1989. We've been, and there's various landowners in, in this group at the time, probably around seven or eight base landowners have been marketing this area for 30 years. And there hasn't been a lot of market acceptance of this area until King Supers came. King Supers came because of the residential that we were able to get back in that 2006, 2007 time period. Tom Thibodeau's report back then said essentially the same thing that it is today, and we've been testing that market ever since. And what we're getting is neighborhood retail. We're not getting the office centers. We, you know, we had envisioned back in 2006, 2007 of essentially a mini Denver Tech Center, essentially. That's what we were anticipating with 7.2 million square feet. The problem with that vision is there's lots of examples around the metro area. When you take E470 and C470, you drive those interchanges and look at interchanges that have zero residential population around them. You won't see any office buildings. You won't see any retail. They're vacant interchanges. And so therefore, this area has been restricted because it doesn't have the Jefferson Parkway. And Tom Thibodeau's report doesn't say that the Jefferson Parkway is going to help us, but at, at all, it's not going to add any additional jobs to the area. But when you end up looking at it, it actually, because it's a tollway, it actually hurts us. So therefore, we believe that the 1.2 million square feet of commercial that he has in his report is more accurate than what we envisioned back in 2006 of the 7.2. So you can't make the market. We've been trying to make the market and the market is not responding to us and stuff. Charlie McKay and I have developed a lot of property over at Church Ranch in Westminster and built spec office buildings down there that the market did accept, but that was on the turnpike that isn't a toll road. And we're hearing that loud and clear from the market out there that it's, the toll road's not going to help us with jobs and office buildings and stuff. So therefore, we think the discussion over infrastructure and building, if you kind of envision the streets down the Denver Tech Center, the massive three and four lane streets down there, is what it would require up in Candela's to end up making that amount of commercial space viable and residential space viable. The original ODP had the 7.2 million square feet plus about 4,400 maximum residential units that were approved at that time. Stuff is either 43, 4400, something like that. So it's something that we just believe that it's probably time that we reevaluate that. And like Ryan said, which Ryan did a great job summarizing it, the report ends up identifying right now, okay, we have a dish, this water's sitting out there. Let's take off the restriction, let the market figure out what there is, but you always have the ability to look at land use in the future and say, okay, does it do various parcels within the JCMD area? Does that end up supporting a residential or commercial application? There's other members of JCMD here too, and there's members of the Foothill Church that may want to speak too. I'm not sure at this point.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else like to address council?
My name is Charlie McKay, 9855 Blue Mountain Drive, Arvada, Colorado. Kind of, I'm going to be a little shorter than Greg, but even, even that, our family goes back far beyond the 40 years. We, we started on this project in the 1960s and formed the Roston Valley Sewer and Water District. And then I have, I've only been working on it since 1979, but I'm delighted to see it going. And my feeling is that if we get the water as, as Ryan brought up, we can maintain our momentum and the momentum is important. I think we've been on a nice, steady momentum and if we have this water as a way for the market to salute us, we can move ahead and keep a good viable project going. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Good. Let's hear from any other individuals that wish, wish to speak and then I'll open it up for council questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Joe Jean, 5690 Webster Street. As you folks know, I've been an engineer in this town as long as they've been working on this project. We have done hundreds of projects on the west side of town. Most of the projects we're engaged in right now have a mixed use component. This council approved an ODT amendment, ODP amendment on the Whisper Creek project, the 25 acres that Foothill's Church currently owns. We did the original ODP on that project, I think, in the early 2000s. The project sat there vacant until then, but the council approved an ODP amendment. We did a density transfer, took some of the units from south of 90th, moved it up to this project in order to make the 25 acres viable for a commercial project that also allows for a, a, if you want it not affordable, because I don't, I don't know what you can call affordable today, but attainable product mix, residential product mix, where you, we're going to be doing a, a higher density town home product that's not up in this area right now, that would be much more affordable or attainable for the young, young families. So while the mixed use component does, will allow for that kind of product to go in in addition to the, everything else. So just wanted to come speak in favor of this kind of operation tonight. If it weren't for the water component, the commercial would not be able to go forward. As again, I heard on the radio over the weekend that the, that the Cyber Monday, as it's called, the online activity, retail activity is up by 18% this year, which is a pretty good indication of the, the traditional retail. We, we did, and again, going back in history a little bit, we did the King Supers at 64th and Indiana where Kohl's is. We did the, the 64th and Indiana with Dan Yacoveta, where it was originally Albertson's and it became Walmart and now it's church, okay? The big box retail is gone. We don't see that any longer. Normally the 25 acres would have been able to be covered by big spot, big box retail. It isn't going to happen. And by the way, the neighborhood meeting didn't want the big bikes box retail. They were very happy to see the commercial in the front and the residential in the back. Again, it takes a mixed use component and we do need water associated with the residential to bring the commercial to the forefront. So that's all I had unless you have questions for me.
Okay. Anyone else wish to address council on this matter before I close the public comment portion? Seeing that, I'll close the public comment portion, open up for city council questions or action. Ms. Ford, you're first.
So Mr. Bradbury, I'd like to ask you a few questions. So I have great difficulty that within the last 11 years, that we are seeing a major change in, in what's being reported about this area. And of course, we're basing this on one report, one person's opinion. And I'm also actually very concerned about what you just said before, that in your estimation that the Jefferson Parkway will not add any jobs, but will actually hurt us. And I think that's a very interesting statement. But I'm going to ask you about, why, why do you think there's such a major change in direction in the last 11 years? What, what is driving that in the market right now? That, you know, 11 years ago, the city was basically told that this would be a very viable area for industrial or light industrial, just like the tech center. And now we're being told, no, it's just not going. It's not happening.
Society has changed, just like Joe mentioned, the big box users have gone away, the office users, people are officing from home. What we kind of see then, the vision out there is people using Amazon, getting deliveries to their homes like we all do. Now, I think the world has changed dramatically over the last 11 years.
So you, 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 you use the e-retail then as, as the main reason why you don't see, or you see the change in direction?
I think there's two things, e-retail and the working remotely from your home office, from people are doing office sharing, they're doing, a lot of people work from home, employers are encouraging that because then they can reduce their office space. Office space is being reduced around the United States and stuff on a pretty dramatic level.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Fred? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have, have another question for Ryan. So Ryan, I, I want to make sure I understand exactly what we're doing here. So basically what we're doing is, is we're taking of the, of the 546 acre feet of water, we're saying that we're going to take the 396 acre feet of water and leave that to be used either for residential or commercial. We're, we're taking it out of just, you know, the, the uses that were determined. Let's see. Well, no, let me take that back. Currently, 546 acre feet of available water is designated for non-residential use.
Correct.
And we're looking to change that?
Correct.
And tell me how we're looking to change that?
So we're essentially making all but 150 acre feet unrestricted.
Unrestricted.
Unrestricted. So there'd be, so the 546 today would go down to 150 of restricted to non-residential. The balance would be unrestricted and it would be subject to the use of land use, future land use. So there, there's not necessarily a project tomorrow that they would use this. It would still have to come before you and have the, the land use be approved as to whether it'd be a mixed use project or residential project or, or whatnot. They would just have that ability to have that water available for that type of project.
Mm-hmm, okay. That's what I thought, just checking.
Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer?
All right, let's see. So let me go back to, I think the purchase price was 23,901, right? right, an acre foot? Is that what? I might, did I understand that correctly?
So you're referring to?
Their option.
Yeah, there's an option. The number's in there.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Yeah, I, it's a total of around two point three million to be able to purchase ninety-three, approximately ninety-three acre feet of water. And that was part of previous IGAs that's already been considered by council and approved.
Okay, and with, how much does a house use, or a house, a typical household use?
I'm gonna what?
Is it a half, half acre foot per year?
Can I give you a mic?
Hi, we estimate two households per acre foot.
Okay, so half acre per house. So you're trying to develop, or possibly develop two hundred and fifty acres. So I'm assuming seven hundred and ninety-two homes is what, what, I mean, could happen eventually if this water allocation changed?
So it depends on the number of dwelling units per acre. So there are areas of land that have kind of extreme topical, topographical challenges. And approximately two hundred and fifty acres, and I think that that also includes the twenty-five acres that the, the church is considering as well. And from that, there'll be different mixes of densities. But yes, those are approximately correct numbers.
And so does JCMD have the five hundred and forty-six acre feet today?
JCMD currently has five hundred and forty-six acre feet of water, and then they have the option to buy an additional ninety-two acre feet of water. And then of that total number, which I'm not gonna do math off the top of my head here, a hundred and fifty acre feet is required to be restricted for commercial. And, and Sharon, or can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that we do a calculation of approximately one to one point two five acre feet, I'm doing this wrong, for commercial. So one to one point two five acre feet of water is for an acre of commercial. Is that correct?
The, the way we say it in the, in the memo, is a hundred and fifty acre feet of water would allow for roughly one hundred to a hundred and fifty acres of non-residential.
Okay, and then, okay, well, so I wanna go back. I, I have to agree with Ms. Ford here. The no economic development contradicts all of everything we say about Jefferson Parkway. So are they right, or, or is it Parkway wrong? Or is it the other way around? Because I can't have two reports, I'm confused. I'm, I'm in conflict of the economic development statement that Greg brought up, and then what we've been just recently told about Jefferson Parkway and why it's so vital.
Sure. I don't, I, I don't have the information on both sides of the reports to argue one side or the other. So I, I, I know that I have seen reports that have been done by Jefferson County Economic Development, and talking about the importance of that being part of a regional transportation network, how that plays in necessarily to the overall work and jobs, whether that's location-specific to Candela's area, I, I couldn't speak to. I can tell you from Dr. Thibodeau's report, some of the things that he was saying relative to the Parkway is the, the tollway and it being a factor relative to people driving on jobs and using a tollway in order to go to jobs. But kind of besides that point, it's really the inventory of commercial land that is on non-tollway transportation corridors. So for example, there's a fifty-year supply of land on the thirty-sixth corridor that is already a major thoroughfare, that's non-toll paying, that is a competitor, if you will, to Candela's for that. And so if you're looking at approximately the same price of land and the same cost of constructions, and you're looking at how those people are going to get there, and you're on a tollway or not on a tollway, that the, the thirty-sixth corridor seems to be more advantageous from a marketing standpoint rela, rather than Candela's. And I, that, that could be some of the inferences that are being drawn up by the, the different statements that are being made.
Okay, well, I'd like us probably to use the word non-residential, because I know we refer to commercial kind of like these big massive buildings, but we should have retail be consideration, and maybe light industrial and other things. And, and I feel that in this conversation, not just with you, but even with them, it's been very much focused around commercial, like big office buildings. So is there any consideration that, that will also have retail and light industrial in this area? Wasn't that some of the plan in the same area?
Yeah, the seven point two million square feet include office, retail, and light industrial. And when we're talking about one point two million square feet, it's broken down in, and that a, a portion of it, about ten percent is industrial, another ten percent is office, and then the balance eighty percent or so is retail. Really, what, what the report said is that they think that this is a local neighborhood level commercial area that's going to be supported by the surrounding market of two to three mile radius, as opposed to people coming in and off of the tollway and it becoming a major intersection like the Mills or the Broomfield Flat Irons Mall or something like that. That it would be less like that, which was part of the original vision of the commercial, and more that it would be a surrounding neighborhood area that would be supported, and that's the amount of commercial that could be supported by that area with a, with, with a certain amount of residential growth.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. And back to JCMD, I don't know who wants to answer this, but what efforts have you made to attract commercial, retail, light industrial? Because I know the King Supers was a big lift by city council and the city, so what, what other efforts have been, been made?
All the property owners out there have had their property listed with various brokerage houses ever since we annexed into the city and at nineteen, since nineteen eighty-nine. And Ryan, you're exactly right on my statement about the tollway being a negative is because of the toll charges and the availability of other land along thirty-six and stuff, and even out to the east and stuff that don't have the tolls. So that becomes a business consideration for people wanting to locate within a toll area and stuff. So, but we've been marketing all along until actually King Supers planted their flag, and it took us probably five, we were working on that probably five years, four to five years before it actually came to the city. We'd had discussions with King Supers, and they'd been studying this a long time. And I know they've been talking to the city for a long time prior to it actually coming to the city. So we've been working on this a very long time. We also, because we got, get King Supers, that brings the SELs, because we got Sisters of Charity, you know, for their office building and their complex that they're gonna be doing. And King Supers is like planting the flag there. And that's going to be what attracts your smaller retail users, office users, that type of thing. And you're exactly right, it ends up being something that the big office buildings, like the tech center, we won't have, but the smaller office buildings, we could have. And I think that's all part of this report and what Tom Thibodeau's saying. And that's really what I'm kind of gauging this on, is Tom Thibodeau's report. So does that answer your question as far as marketing?
Yeah, I think the concern I have with that report is it was pre-recession back in oh-nine, and this is pre-recession again. I mean, we're on the cusp of it. So it's, it's, it's interesting that that report comes out a year or two before the next recession. And usually what happens in the recession is you see, commercial property starts picking up, you have the ebb and flows between, you know, residential and commercial. And I, I feel like we're premature and, and jumping before that happens. That's all.
I, I'd beg to differ, because we're in the commercial business, and we've been building this spec office building since prior to the dot-com bust. And it ends up, when you get a recession going on, your commercial dies off first. It just, it gets killed instantly. And we had a number of office buildings that we owned that ended up just getting decimated by the dot-com companies.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, you're next.
Thank you. So I'm a little spatially spastic in trying to decipher what seven point two million square feet looks like versus what one point two million square feet looks like. Can somebody give me an example of each?
Yes, I can try. So approximately one point five million square feet is the new town area. So Costco, Sam's Club, Home Depot, Lowe's, up to the movie theater. So we're talking about from Grandview South to I-70, from Lamar Marshall over to Allison, approximately. That, that's about one point five million square feet of commercial.
Okay, and so six times bigger than that?
It would be that, I don't, I hesitate to quote, I, I, I thought that the tech center was something like fifteen million square feet. So we're talking about about half of what the, the tech center was. But I could be a little bit off on my numbers there.
All right. That, that's helpful, I appreciate that. Because that's, you know, you hear these numbers and you have no idea conceptually what that really means.
Very fair.
What that could look like. And, you know, the, and, and so I appreciate that, and I appreciate the, some of the questions that have already been asked and answered. You know, the, the Thibodeau study, I, I would have to tend to agree with Ms. Ford on this, that it's, it's one study, and it's one man's opinion. You know, it's kind of like asking an attorney to opine on something. It's, they put all their best efforts into it and come up with what they think is the right answer. And I think that's kind of what Mr. Thibodeau did, or Dr. Thibodeau did. No disrespect, I'm sorry, I called him Mr. Thibodeau. But, you know, the, the challenge is, is that, and I wasn't here back when this area was originally, when the ODP was originally, I was here, I wasn't in this seat, when the original ODP was approved. So I'm just curious, and I don't know if anybody, maybe the mayor was, what was the conversation around the infrastructure? And, you know, the need for three to four lanes on Candela's Parkway, or was Candela's Parkway even a part of the conversation? And I'm looking at you, you don't have to answer. But anybody on our team remember what that conversation looked like? I'm sure Mr. McKay and Mr. Bradbury remember that conversation, but did you talk about this, or was this just all of a sudden somebody had an epiphany, or because of the study that Mr. Thibodeau did, Dr. Thibodeau did, now we believe that, okay, now we need to have this three and four lanes, and we've got all this infrastructure change? And anybody help me understand that?
So I wasn't here. But I've talked to a lot of people about the issue. And what I will note is that the overall master plan of the infrastructure does recognize at the time, so when, when it was originally written in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, it did call for a three-lane road, which is, so it was considered. People were aware of it. I think that part of the conversation was when the JCMD was first being developed, it was a phased approach and said, you know, this is a massive piece of land, this is going to be development over the next fifty years or so. And so we don't want to necessarily build the year fifty infrastructure today. And so they did a phased approach to a lot of the infrastructure pieces. And so that's what we're kind of coming to fruition as we're getting to the next stage of development and the next iteration, it kicks into, well, now we need to be considering the next level of infrastructure. So they went, they built Candela's Parkway, the two-lane road, and they said, this is what we think is appropriate now, this is gonna get us a little bit down the road. Then when, you know, the town center comes online and we get, you know, five million square feet of commercial, that's gonna generate a lot of revenue for us, we'll be able to do the types of things that are needed to do in order to build that next level of infrastructure. The challenge is, is because that level of development isn't happening, the revenue sources aren't there in order to pay for the infrastructure. And so it's this chicken and the egg thing that you can't allow, or you can't build what is being required of the next phase based on what the future is expected to come. You need it here today in order to create the revenue stream to build the infrastructure.
Sure. And so at that time, again, I know you weren't there and I wasn't there in those conversations, but I'm pretty confident that in the conversations, there was discussion around the Parkway and how the Parkway was going to support that commercial development. And now, again, Ms. Dr. Thibodeau has suggested that maybe not so much. And so, and I, I understand the change. I, I totally understand the change in, in eleven years in consumer behavior. But to completely disregard the fact that the Parkway, that the city's invested heavily in, is gonna have no economic benefit on the area, I think is hard for me to believe. And so to, to use that as a basis of, to make this change, I, I'm, I'm struggling with that, because I, I do believe that the Parkway will definitely develop or create economic benefit through commercial development to that area. So I, I struggle with that. You know, I know that councils, again, before my time, have kind of put Sixty-sixth and Indiana, that whole area, that commercial development area, in a safe spot and said, we are not gonna touch that for residential development, that's always gonna be for commercial or, or that type of use. And have, similarly to what the mayor was saying about the previous hearing, of we need to preserve those areas for those kinds of developments. It, it just, it feels to me like, you know, we're, we're just saying, well, we got this guy who said that it's this, and so maybe that's really what we ought to do, without really testing or, or waiting, or saying, hey, we don't care if it's gonna take us fifteen or twenty years, Sixty-sixth and Indiana, it's gonna remain commercial. And I think it's been that way for quite some time. It's starting to come along. There's, I think just last, last business meeting, we had an approval of another commercial development in that space. So it feels like we're giving up on, or maybe believing that residential is easier. Just, that's just my feel. And so I, I'm struggling with it. I get the concept behind the purpose of the conversation of taking the restriction away and making it easier for the market to kind of dictate. But what I fear is that we're gonna get an onslaught of residential applications that are gonna come in and ask for, you know, another, another development here and another development here. And really what the, the people in Candela's have been asking for is all of this other stuff that they moved out there for, and now are continuing to say, hey, what are we gonna get, and when are we gonna get it? And I understand, like the gentleman with the Goddard School, we need people to take a risk and be entrepreneurial, entrepreneurial in nature to, to, to do that, because I believe people think that it's our job to bring that commercial development, well, we can only do so much. And so by limiting the, the, the amount of square feet that has the potential for it, I think people are gonna look at that and say, again, because they're not understanding what one point two million square feet looks like, you're, you're, you're taking away and you're gonna bring in more residential, and we don't even have the roads to support that, and I, I can just hear it now. So I, you know, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with, with, with the entire conversation and, and where it ought to go, and where we end up, you know, once a decision is made. You know, we, there was a decision made back whenever this was brought in, you know, and then now I guess we're, you know, we're being asked to make a decision about water use now, and what if things change, or what if things don't change? I guess it could change again, it could be brought up, you know, in a future hearing. But again, I just, it just feels like we're kind of saying, well, we've got the study, and the study's right. I don't know if I necessarily believe in the study.
Okay, Mr. Marriott, you're next.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for our staff. So the first question I would have is, of this, this three hundred and ninety-six acre feet that they're proposing to have is, of this, this 396 acre feet that they're proposing to free up from the restriction of being commercial only, is that all currently available? Or is any of this dependent on the gross reservoir project?
It's all currently available.
Currently available, okay. And the 92 acre feet that they have an option to purchase is, is also currently available?
Currently available.
Currently available, okay. So just kind of doing a little back of the napkin calculation here, it appears to me that we're kind of figuring on about one to one and a half acre feet of water per acre of commercial development. Is that about right?
That's correct.
Somewhere in that neighborhood. But then residential development, depending on the density, might be two or three acre feet of water per acre? Is that, is that a fair average?
Yes.
Okay. So the question I would have then is, if all of this 396 acre feet of water, as well as the 92 acre feet that they have an option on, if that were to all be used for residential, would that have the effect of, of essentially drying up any land, making any land undevelopable because there is no water available?
It would not, not from a commercial standpoint, because there'd be 150 acre feet reserved for commercial development.
Sure. And I don't mean just for commercial, but I mean for commercial or residential. In other words, the, the density of the water use goes up as the conversion from commercial to residential happens. What happens when that, all those, that 396 and 92 acre feet are used up, there's 150 acre feet reserved for commercial, is there any land left then that could be developed into either commercial or residential that now has no option of water available?
Well, there, yeah, it's not a land question. There's land that can be developed. There's just no water for it to be developed with. And so it would be restricted until essentially the completion of gross reservoir that would then be allocated to JCMD in order to complete the gap. Because JCMD does not have all the water it needs in order for complete buildout. So this is basically utilizing a portion of the, the water that they have remaining until the gap is filled with gross reservoir.
Okay. So the, the, this may temporarily dry some land, essentially. That's what the farmers call it when they sell their water rights off. But might dry some land, but that would be a temporary situation, provided gross reservoir happens.
Comes to fruition, correct.
Right. Okay. Okay, I'll have some comments after we make, we make motion, but that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, a couple of questions for clarification from me. We're not tonight committing a change or, or, or saying we're going to take approximately 6 million square feet out of potential commercial development.
We are not.
So...
You are correct. Right now, the ODP still requires a minimum of 7.2 million square feet of commercial, and that is not a decision you're making tonight.
Right. And then with regard to how this water is allocated, we still have ultimate decision-making as to whether or not it develops residentially or commercially.
That is correct.
So this is just to remove, and, and I'll make some comments during discussion on the motion as well. But this just removes the requirement we put in, frankly, somewhat arbitrarily, and through a negotiation process years ago, in terms of a, a percentage ratio between commercial and residential.
Correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. I see no other council members having questions. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 19-046, an ordinance authorizing the Fifth Amendment to the 2005 Intergovernmental Agreement, binding between the City of Arvada, Colorado, and the Jefferson Center Metropolitan District Number Two, be approved on final reading, numbered 4717, and ordered published by title only. So I'd like to make a couple of comments and let you know how I'm going to vote on this. So I think the, when I look back, I was obviously not sitting in this seat back in the days when this ODP and when all this was negotiated and proposed way back. But I can certainly look back that far and remember what things were like back then, and also can acknowledge what things are like today. I think Mr. Bradbury, I agree with his statement when he says that there have been some giant changes in our world in the last 15, 10, 15, and 20 years. Myself being in the retail business, I live it every day, that, you know, we, we don't shop the way we used to. My little business has luckily survived the era of the big box store, and I, I for one, I'm not so sorry to see them go. But I also think, you know, we shop differently than we used to. And certainly people work differently than they used to. In the 1980s and 1990s, I think it was fairly unheard of that people worked from home. And, and now it's become quite common. And so I think with changing market, you know, the world doesn't stay still, and, and the plans were made, looking forward many years back in the day they were made, and, and things you couldn't have forecast have changed. I also think that the mayor's comments were also right on about this not being a, this is not approving anything. This is giving the landowners there the needed flexibility they have to continue to market their properties and make best use of their properties. I think the community and through its elected representatives up here will still have, will have still all the say they would have had before about what may or may not happen with every land use up there in Candela's. I also am comfortable with what I've heard from our staff members who, who tell me that this doesn't put us in a situation where ultimately there becomes land that's completely undevelopable because there is no water available, nor will there ever be water available. I think there may, that may be a somewhat temporary situation. But, but doesn't appear to me that that would be a permanent situation. So for all those reasons, I'm going to support this. I think, I think it is important for the Candela's community that, that the development finishes up there. I think it's also important that the area gets a, a mix of residential and commercial, retail, office, much like it was, it was planned. But I also think that the world has changed, and it's not likely to be a half of a Denver Tech Center up there. I think I can, I can see that very clearly from where I sit right now. And looking forward, I can't see that, that that looks ever likely in, in my lifetime. So for all those reasons, I'm very comfortable supporting this motion and will be voting yes.
Mr. Pfeifer?
So, you know, Mr. Jones told me I should go have dinner at a place called Lot One over in Five Parks. And I had dinner with one of my son's friends' parents, and actually saw a lot of friends there. It was kind of, it was neat. It was, it was really nice to be there. Met Josh, the owner. And, and the discussion at the table was around, boy, I wish there was more things to do in this area. I wish there were more restaurants. I wish there were more just activities. In fact, the mom was telling me, actually two moms were telling me that, well, we just go up to Broomfield. It's a lot closer, you know, just to run up there and spend time and superior and stuff. You know, when you look at our tax revenue and diversification, and where do we sustain ourselves into the future, we have to look at preserving land for future uses. I think the council of 2005 and earlier had a vision to preserve land, and I think a way to, 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 to keep it into its zoning was to put this restriction on it. Good for them, because I think we don't know what the future has. I will tell you, I think that you're right. The big box isn't around anymore. But I don't think the small business has gone away. And I think you would agree, Mr. Marriott. And I think that's what people are looking for, opportunities for small businesses to flourish in an area that we're really a desert. If you look at our preservation of 66th and Indiana, the hearing we just had before here, looking at the small pockets we have, these are small business owners that are trying to do good things in the world, and especially for our community. And I think that if we start eroding from this pool of, of our land use, I think we are now reducing the dream of some of these small business owners. They don't need to be five-story, 10-story corporations that are coming in. We're looking at the Goddard School, or we could be looking at some medical offices. We can be looking at Sancio, like your business, or other smaller businesses of 100 or less employees. This is great opportunity. Also, for the people that work from home, as of 2:30 today, I am a resident of Candela's. And boy, do people know I'm there now. And I've got nonstop complaints about nothing to do. Because when is that area going to be developed for commercial? They, the interesting part with those conversations with my new neighbors has been how bored they are, and they would like to see the city fulfill what they bought their house on. I went through the six-month process to build my home. So did my five-generation, fourth-generation family. We are all living within three blocks in the next five months. When we go into that sales office and you look at that map, you're, you're bought on a dream. You're bought on a concept that was shared with every resident in that community. Those are our citizens, our constituents, our voters, our taxpayers, who are wanting to thrive in this community. And I feel that releasing this water restriction is a, a way to quickly erode on a very protected area of, of opportunity for us. I also think that I can recall conversations with the City Council of Golden and others where we said, and I've said, and we've, we've implied this eight years ago or so, that we are not going to be just building, because I remember the conversation with the now mayor, that we are not sprawling and using water and, and letting them take our water to sprawl. We, we made a comment to, I remember a conversation, we made a comment that said that they would bring water, that the developers would bring water to develop. And now I feel like we're kind of changing the rules of that. And I feel, I feel like we're kind of going against something that we might have made a, maybe it was a shakehand discussion, maybe it was informal. But it's still, they were our neighbors. And they thought that the sprawl was going to cause the Jefferson Parkway, because all the economic development opportunities. And I, I just feel like this part of, of us relinquishing this water and freeing this up is kind of going against the conversation that we had with, with that city council. So therefore, I will not be supporting your request to change the allocations for water. I don't see the, the need or the requirement. I'd rather landbank that and not put ourselves into betting on the come. My concern is gross reservoir. I'm not going to take anything that affects Jefferson Parkway or gross reservoir out of our hands. And I feel that this is something that could spark a, an issue for us if we continue down this path. Gross reservoir has to happen. And if we change these allocations up, and you're using more water consumption for residential, and something hap, happens with gross, then what? There's a lot of moving parts here. And we need to be very cautious, and we fo, we have to focus on the future of our residents and the water preservat, preservat, preservation, excuse me, of that water for future residents and multiple generations to come. And so, again, I will not be supporting this request.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. And I apologize, Mr. Marriott, if I was out of order before. I was kind of speaking out of order. I apologize.
I wasn't going to call you on it too quickly.
Thank you.
Sir, I've closed the public comment portion. I'm sorry. Sorry.
I appreciate the comments of both Mr. Marriott and Mr. Pfeifer. And, you know, being, having been a resident in that area for the last four years, not specifically in Candela's, but in Light and Rock, there's a lot of new residential homes up there. And people who, like me, bought up there with the expectation of certain commercial development that would happen. I'm pleased with some of the things that, I'm pleased with all of the commercial development that's been approved over the last couple of years. I think that it's all going to add to the quality of life for the residents in that northwest side of Arvada. I, I get, again, you know, the purpose, and I appreciate the mayor's comments with respect to the conversation and what we're approving or making available. But I still struggle with the fact that, you know, we, there, there was a vision, and that, that vision's been being sold, to echo what Mr. Pfeifer was saying, has been, has been sold to the residents of that area for the last several years about what's coming. Big, big signs on the side of the road. They're not, they're so much anymore. But big signs about, here's what the possibilities of this area are. Come and live here. And so I think, you know, there, there are, there are reasons to protect kind of the big vision. And I appreciate the fact that JCMD had the vision back in 2000, whenever that was, to, to have the concept of what this could be like. I really hope it's not a Denver Tech area. I don't think that's what the area needs to be. But I'm concerned that, you know, by opening it up, it's going to bring more residential development. And we can call it mixed use. And I think there are spots that are great for mixed use. But there was a mixed use development that was put together at 64th and Indiana, that, you know, these flats, you know, these retail spots were supposed to be, and I don't think there's a lot of retail in there today. On the converse, you've got Five Parks where there's mixed use. And it's been, I think, a pretty successful use of mixed use. And so I think that, you know, there, that's available. The challenge is, is that I, I would agree that, you know, if gross reservoir doesn't happen for one reason or another, and now we've opened this up, and we've got these residential applications to build these, you know, to build however many more houses, and we have to tell those developers, sorry, we don't have the water. I think that becomes a big issue. You know, again, in concept and in theory, I understand. But I think that we need to, the concept necessarily in my mind hasn't been proved by Dr. Thibodeau. And so I think that we need to just sit back and hold tight and, and see what happens, and see what the SCL healths bring, and what, you know, what other kind of commercial will develop. My sense is, is that this is a conversation that is going to be ongoing for several years. And so I'm just in the place of, let's preserve what we've got. Let's keep what we've got. And, and time will tell what needs to be developed. And, but I don't think that we need to, to make a change at this point in order for that to happen. And so therefore, I won't be supporting the request.
Okay. I'll make some comments at this point. First of all, it takes roof, rooftops to bring commercial. I mean, that's the bottom line. And if we don't have adequate residential, the commercial is never going to come. So I think we've got to find what's the tipping point, what's the right balance. And I don't think we're there. I mean, those of us who went out on that tour, there are, there's a lot of vacant land out there. And I'm, I'm not as concerned about taking some of that, certainly not all of it, certainly not a majority of it, and switch it from commercial to residential. But where appropriate, where because of topography or other, you know, logical reasons, it should be moved into residential or mixed use, we ought to permit that to happen. As to the issue of, of these ratios, I mean, I can tell you, it was Ken Feldman and I who sat in the negotiating team on behalf of the city with the gentlemen who are out here in the audience. And it was a lot of back and forth, you know, sort of betting on the come, not knowing what the future was going to hold. I can tell you that decades ago, the thought of what was going to happen out in Jefferson Center was that it was going to become a mini Denver Tech Center. It was going to be a place for world headquarters. And you're not seeing those like you used to. That's just changed. And you've got a lot of competition for those kind of things that make it very unlikely that they're ever going to happen on this site. I think the reality of it is, is that, yes, we had vision, we had dreams. But sometimes reality rears its ugly head. And the, and the reality is, is that some of those dreams need to change because of the change in our society and the change in our needs. And that I, I don't... think that we should be so locked into, I'm not going to let go of, of what this vision was when that vision is just no longer possible. And so it's, it's better to be pragmatic, it's better to be realistic, and to still maintain guidelines and restrictions, which I think we still hold on to with the approval of these, both the, the ordinance and the, and the resolutions. So that's, that's where I stand on it, and we'll see how it plays out. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. I mean, the, the challenge, again, is, you know, the selective nature of what we hold tight to. You know, why was 66th and Indiana so important? I don't know. Other than I was told that we're not going to, you know, that's, that's an area that we want to preserve. What's so special about 66th and Indiana versus, and I get, there's a, you're right, there is a lot of vacant land out in the Candela's area. And there are topography issues, whether it's residential or commercial. I think there are topography issues. So there could be the sense that there just may be some undevelopable land. But the landowners, and I totally get that they want to maximize their dollar. They want to maximize what they can get for their land. Totally, I mean, that's their prerogative. You know, but again, I think, you know, as we look at, you know, what we preserve and why we preserve it, again, what was special about 66th and Indiana? I don't know. I wasn't a part of that conversation. But I'm a part of this conversation, and it feels like we need to make sure that we're preserving the appropriate amount of land for commercial. I also know that, you know, as I, as I continue to think through this, you know, the, the nature of the council today is, I think, really good in the sense that when an applicant is brought before us, whether it's commercial or residential, I really believe that this council does a good job of vetting those types of opportunities. My fear, quite honestly, is that in four years, I may not be here. You won't be here.
My wife applauds that.
That's right. So as the council makeup changes and we've released this, then all of the sudden, it goes crazy. I don't know. And maybe I'm projecting, you know, unnecessarily. But that's, honestly, that's my fear, is that, you know, back when this was created, it was created for a reason. It was created to, to, I think, put some pressure on the developers to do the right things and to bring the right kinds of projects to the city. And so I think, you know, that's probably some of my, my reservation around what's the right thing to do now. You know, so I, I guess what I will say is I'm waffling a little bit. And, and on, on whether or not, you know, again, and so if we lift it, we still have the authority for every application that's put in front of us, based on the merits of that application. Again, I, I'm hoping that somebody else is going to say something here in the next few minutes.
Okay. Ms. Ford, you haven't spoken yet, so I'll let you jump ahead of Mr. Pfeiffer and Mr. Marriott, who have had a bite at the apple.
So I, I struggle with the mixed-use concept, because what I've seen a lot of is different types of housing. When I think of mixed use, I think of actual mixed use, many different types of uses of the property. And so I'm a little hesitant as well. I get it. I understand that we can't be rigid and that sometimes change is required. But I think in 11 years, it's just a very short period of time. And I'm not convinced that we're absolutely changing just yet. I think that we are seeing changes. I just read an article in the paper the other day about a mall that is thriving. So why is it that some malls thrive and some malls don't thrive? I think it's true of any business. Businesses thrive because they have a good model. And those that don't, don't have a good model. And I think that people still are purchasing in retail. We saw it. Maybe it was higher online. It's easier online. But people still like to go into stores and look around. And I just have a problem thinking that that's going to go away. It hasn't gone away since retail started, you know, back in the early 1900s. We're still shopping retail. Is it going to change completely? Maybe, but I don't see that happening immediately. And so for me, the way I'm looking at this is, is I too am concerned that if we release the water, yes, we can still make decisions on each and every development that comes. But like you just said before, I think there's greater pressure to maybe, you know, agree to things that maybe aren't the best. And so that's why I'm going to not vote for it right now. I'm not quite ready to, to jump yet. I think 11 years is a short period of time. I think that to base it on one person's report, I'd like to see things change a little bit right now. We're in a very hot market. It's going to start cooling. But I'm just not ready yet to release that water. I think it's good to hold our developers to the fire a little bit, to see if we can put a little pressure to, to bring in businesses that our citizens really want. Because ultimately, if we don't get things happening into that area, I think it's going to be a negative for that area eventually. It will not be attractive for people, because it's going to be very congested, and there's not going to be the things there that people look for. So at this point, I'm going to hold off and vote no.
Okay. Ms. Simpson, you also have not had an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. So we've heard a lot tonight, and it's a lot to process. I will say, I want to echo David's sentiments quite significantly. Something once done can't be undone. However, it's a short period of time to wait to see what's going to happen in a community that is undergoing massive change, particularly with the Parkway. We don't know what's going to happen there. If built, once built, what will the actual outcome be, as opposed to debating these theoretical studies? We just don't know. So we can hold on and wait and see what actually happens over, as Nancy says, 11 years isn't really that much time in the grand scheme of things. And we can, in that meantime, we encourage different kinds of businesses. We see what actually happens. Not to mention what happens with the reservoir. Colorado is undergoing aridification. This is something we need to be concerned about and thinking in the very long term. Not just what our water needs now, what our water needs 20, 30, 40 years from now. And so, like I said, once, once done, it can't be undone. But we can always revisit this issue again if it, once we know more information. That's my thought on it.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
You're right. It's a blank canvas. And we only have a one time or one shot to do what we believe is good for our future. So rooftops, I know, Mayor, you said the rooftops, but let's just look at some, a few things here. It's the wealthiest zip code in the Front Range. It's also the most $1 million homes in one zip code in the Front Range. And yet, like, my home has three fiber companies straight to my house, Comcast, TDS, and CTL, or CenturyLink. That investment by Comcast, TDS, and CenturyLink, multi-million dollar investment by them each, just to do what they're doing. So for me, that tells me, the corporations know this is a place where there's money. And I get that people may work from home, but they also like to go, they don't want to be in their caves all day long. As my wife works from home, the first thing I do, I come from work, and we're right outside, spending our money in a, usually a restaurant. You'll always find us in a restaurant. And when there's no restaurants, well, I go spend my tax money in Superior or somewhere else now, I guess. You know, and that's, that's, that's just heartening for me. So I think that this area is primed for something in the future. And I think we should be very cautious about what we do around the water and what we change. Because even though I agree that we're lifting the restriction, I don't know how often we've said no to a rezoning. And that worries me that, you know, how fast we may erode land and our zoning, because I, I don't think I've gotten it from staff yet. But what I've asked for was, where's all of our zoning for light commercial, you know, retail, industrial? And every time we erode away, I like to see that erode or that vision of erosion. We're a bedroom community. We do not make tax money off of people's property. We do not. I don't know where, we think we make money off rooftops. It's absolutely not. Now, what we make money to sustain our city and build our roads and sustain our roads is when they go and, and patronize a, a small business or a restaurant and get it. Maybe they'll do some shopping online. But the idea is, is they're not stuck in their houses all day long. So I, I would, I think with the huge increase in commercial approvals we've done in, around King Supers has, has clearly demonstrated to me that those commerc, that, that other corporations and businesses are seeing the success of having an anchor tenant, which was the whole purpose why we did a tax shareback, was to spike that economy, to get the commercial going. That was our olive branch to help, help with that. And it's working. And it's hard for me to say, okay, well, let's just give up now, and let's just put more rooftops up. I think we're going to have more people upset with us if you see another 200, 300 acres of, of houses go up, and we don't have the roads to, to support them. They're pissed with us now without, you know, snow plowing them all out there as it is. So, I mean, just to add another, you know, that many more houses, I think, is alarming. So I would agree with the, it sounds like the most, or few council members are saying, let's wait. Let's just see what's happening. Let's be cautious about this. And let's see what the efforts are. I think we should sit tight. So, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. Thanks for letting me have another crack at it. I was going to try to help Mr. Jones with his waffling, just a little bit, and draw, draw a comparison between the property at 66th and Indiana and, and what we're talking about here. I think you have seen this council hold to zones. And the difference there is, that's a relatively small area of a few numbers of parcels that are specifically zoned already for something. We're talking about here, an ODP, or a much, much broader scope, a much higher view of, of this area. And I, I think that the problem we currently have is, in its current configuration, the conversations can't even be had because of the restrictions placed by the, by the, what I would call somewhat arbitrary, or, or best guess at the time, of, of what this area may have been from nearly 20 years ago. And I, I think the, to me, the 66th and Indiana and this are not really comparable. I think they're very different. Although, when we get down to parcel-by-parcel approval, which is what it would take for anything to actually be developed up here, whether it be residential or commercial, then we would be in the same situation as 66th and Indiana. So for me, that's, that's, that's how I look at the difference there.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
Another country here. Thank you, Your Honor. I was just wondering if it was possible at this time, Ms. Morris, could we change the percentage of commercial and residential? Instead of opening up the floodgate and saying, "We're going to remove this restriction," or change this restriction from this much commercial to this much residential, could we say, "You know what? Let's alleviate a little bit of the pressure here and make it, make a change in the motion?"
Legally, there's nothing preventing you from, from suggesting that change. As a practical matter, there may be things that Mr. Sachelsky or Mr. Devon want to add, but legally, you can do that.
So the answer is certainly you can change the percentage, but we wouldn't, we really wouldn't have any basis. It would be somewhat arbitrary if we did it tonight. I mean, we'd have to probably do some more analysis and come back to you in the future.
Absolutely. And it sounds like the mayor said that the original number was a bit arbitrary.
It was. I think that one thought would be, sort of sensing the direction that I see this moving, of possibly tabling this matter for further discussions with JCMD and further, you know, consideration of this at some other time further down the road. What's your, what's council's thought on that?
So here, here's what my thought would be. This being not quasi-judicial, if, if, regardless of what the outcome here is, it can be revisited any time
It's true.
For any reason.
That's accurate.
Would there be, and I would ask our city attorney, is there any, is, is there any reason why something might be tabled versus not tabled in this particular situation? I understand if it was quasi-judicial, why we might do that, but...
If we want to continue the hearing to a future date, our rules do require that we continue it to a date certain. So there, that's the constraint that you're looking at. If you went ahead and voted on it tonight, regardless of the outcome of that vote, we could bring it back later. It would give us a little bit more flexibility on the date and time.
So, so it might make sense to go ahead and do a vote tonight?
That's correct.
And, and this would not come back as a reconsideration. It would come back as potentially a new, totally different ordinance and resolutions?
That would be my opinion, based on our rules and based on the nature of this particular matter. Since we aren't making a decision that would alter the rights of the parties as they are now, if, if it was a no vote, it would stay as the status quo, then we can bring it back up at a later time without having to go through the reconsideration process.
Okay. Fair enough. Ms. Miller?
Is it possible, Mr. Devon, to get a date on the calendar, a date certain now? Is that possible to look at the calendar even?
No. I, I honestly, we, we, I, I would be, I would be shooting in the dark and potentially putting our team at a disadvantage. We would have to, we would really have to discuss this and certainly have discussion with JCMD as well, as, as well as the council, before we would come back.
Okay. Well, there may be some value in going ahead and taking a vote to give all parties a sense of where things stand in terms of for future negotiations. So with that, I'll call the question on the original motion, which is the ordinance authorizing the Fifth Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement. Mr. Jones, I see you're continuing to waffle. All votes are cast. That pass, that passes four to three with Mr. Pfeiffer, Ms. Ford, and Ms. Simpson voting no. Okay, let's go on to the other ones. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Resolution R-19-124, a resolution rescinding Resolution R-02-104, a resolution allocating water supplies to new users be approved.
And I think we've had discussion on this. We've sort of, I've sort of allowed discussion on all, but Mr. Pfeiffer, go ahead.
So because we're doing water and we don't have gross reservoir, what, what does this play into that? I'm trying to understand. So you're saying we have the water today, and, and it's not being used by any citizens, and we are so flourished with water that we can give out these 396 acres?
This is not giving out, this is allocation that's already been given.
That's there. But they're not going to be able to buy the 92 acres.
They can buy the 92 acres.
And we have it in
Yes, we do.
Reserve, and doesn't put us in any risk.
It does not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So this is the resolution rescinding the resolution from 2002, allocating the water supplies to new uses, if people would cast their votes. All votes are cast. Okay, we'll get ready to reconvene here. Thank you for the break. I'll open the public hearing on one that I don't think will be nearly as time-consuming. The Council Bill 1904-7, an ordinance adopting the floodplain map dated November 15, 2019, as the official floodplain map of the City of Arvada, superseding that dated February 13, 2018, and further adopting the flood insurance study, the FIS, and the flood insurance rate maps, the firm prepared by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We'll have City Engineer Jacob Beadle present this item for your consideration tonight.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This here is, if we could show my image, please, is a floodplain study for Leiden Creek from the northwest limits of Leiden Creek all the way to the confluence with Ralston Creek. Now, and then also with this is a floodplain study of Barbara Gulch going from the northwest corner of the city limits all the way to the confluence with Leiden Creek. Now, this was part of the NFIP program that the City of Arvada is a partner with, with FEMA, and part of that is we partner with them and they pay for the study and conduct it through the Colorado Water Board of Conservation, CWCB. And part of this was through the CHAMP program, and they were the ones that conducted this analysis and performed it and gave us the opportunity to review it and give comments. And now it's to, it's been in the works since 2016. Right now, it's at the final stages of that, ready for approval and to become active and effective. So I guess at that, I open it up to questions.
Very good. Let's see if there's any member of the public that would like to address this on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. Now open it up for, for council questions. Go ahead, Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. So Jacob, I have a question, a couple of questions here. One is, who's actually doing this study?
The CHAMP program, so it's a consultant AECOM that is doing it.
Okay, and are we paying for it or is this being paid by a federal grant or something?
It's paying, paid for by the state through the CHAMP.
By the state, so the state's doing it?
And through, I don't understand, I guess I don't know the ins and outs of the funding source, but I would assume that it comes through FEMA.
Through FEMA, okay. What's the difference between this type of study and one that I know the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District does watershed studies for flooding, you know, that type of thing?
Yeah, they're called, oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, they're called FADS typically, and it's, the difference is, is that this is actually making the changes to the floodplain regulatory, so this is what the flood insurance firm maps are based off of. So say if you have a property that is in the affected flood zone, this is what the, your flood insurance is based off of.
Right.
Where the urban drainage studies are really a planning tool.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, I see no other questions. I'm open to a motion. Mr. Jones.
Make a motion.
You may.
I move that Council Bill 19-047, an ordinance adopting the floodplain map dated November 15, 2019, as the official floodplain map of the City of Arvada, superseding the dated February 13, 2018, and further adopting the flood insurance study, FIS, and the flood insurance map rate maps, firm prepared by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, be approved on final reading numbered 4718 and ordered published by title only.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, our final public hearing for tonight. I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 1904-8, an ordinance authorizing the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada, Colorado, and Haskins Station Metropolitan District. Mr. Devon.
I'll be taking this one, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Morris.
The intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada and Haskins Metropolitan District, the current ordinance would amend and restate that IGA, which was originally approved on April 16, 2019. The intent of the amendments are to add language to the IGA that authorizes the district to own, operate, and maintain a park within the district which is open to the general public. Additionally, the IGA would obligate the district to contribute to regional improvements. The definition of regionally significant improvements would change for the amended and restated IGA, the scope changing from 52nd and Ward and that intersection to the potential projects listed as part of Exhibit B in the amended and restated IGA. There would be no change to the amounts contributed to the city for those regionally significant improvements. The amendments are in addition to the previously approved IGA, which enables the city to enforce the terms and conditions of the service plan, which was approved by the city council on September 17, 2018. The city team recommends approval of this ordinance.
Very good, and we have Megan Murphy who would like to address city council on this matter. Good to see you again.
Always good to see you guys. Megan Murphy from White Bear, different client, same me. How you doing?
The way we attorney czar, isn't it?
I know. You guys are having a rough night, so I'll make this brief. I'm here to give you money. We have issued bonds. You tell us 52nd and Ward needs help, sign this document, we will give you the money. That's a short story. That's all I can say. But I'm happy to answer questions, of course, in all seriousness. I'm a jokey person, but in all seriousness, I'm happy to answer questions.
Great. Mr. Marriott's going to start it off with for you.
So I have a question. I think the city attorney in her introduction of this topic just mentioned that the regionally significant, the money contributed to that could be used for 52nd Ward Road, but also projects listed on Exhibit B?
Yeah, so in September of 18, we brought this service plan to you and negotiated as part of this and part of Sabell that I saw you guys for a couple of weeks ago to give you money, but at the time, we didn't know what it would be needed for.
Yep.
So this district, just Haskins Station, has issued bonds and bond council requires a more detailed analysis of what that will be for. So that's Exhibit, Exhibit B is created by city staff, and I understand that it was worked out with the city of Wheat Ridge, but I can't personally testify to that.
So the Exhibit B that I have is blank.
I think it's the.
Oh, may I provide you a copy, sir? May I approach the bench?
That would be terrific.
So you don't have, it's, it's Ryan's memo?
I'll be happy to pass it down. That, that's the only question that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a second copy of the exhibit if anyone wants to see it.
Here, I'll pass mine down.
I don't know if it goes to a left turn at 54th, but, you know, just in case.
So I think Exhibit B is there, but it's just on the page 12, it's nothing there. It should have said page left blank intentionally with the memo to follow.
So it's there, it's just.
It's just further down.
So you all found it?
Yeah.
So that one was there? Okay, any other questions? I would entertain a motion. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 19-048, an ordinance authorizing the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between the City of Arvada, Colorado, and Haskins Station Metropolitan District be approved on final reading numbered 4719 and ordered published by title only. And I just want to make a quick comment, and that is this intergovernmental agreement with this metro district does provide several million dollars worth of regional improvements. I think there's no better example of development paying its way than this, and so for that reason, I will certainly be voting no.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you for the concise but very entertaining presentation from council for the, for the district.
Thank you all. I'll see you guys in 2020.
Okay, very good. Okay, that completes our public hearings, public comment period. Does anyone like to address city council at this time? Excuse me. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion. Reports from city council. Mr. Jones.
So I don't have a report necessarily on any of the committees or boards that I'm on. I just wanted to congratulate the Pomona Panthers and the Ralston Valley Mustang football teams for their hard-fought weekend in the semifinals of the state football championship. Unfortunately, both schools lost, but it would have been a really, really cool thing if they would have won because then we would have had a Pomona RV champion, 5A championship football game. I'm, I'm sad only because my son plays at RV and, you know, that, those kids, to get to that stage, not many kids get that opportunity to play in a semi, in the semis, in a state championship. So they, they all played their hearts out on, from both schools, and I just wanted to congratulate both teams for their hard-fought seasons. I'm sure it's going to be an even better season in 2020 for both of them. And I also wanted to give a shout out to my son Parks. Today is his 17th birthday, and so he's, he's an amazing young man, and he was mourning the loss over the weekend, but I think today he's better. So happy birthday, Parks.
That's great. I don't see any other council comments. We need a ratification of the Arvada Economic Development Association board members. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. I'm going to move that the nominations of Mr. Dougherty, Mr. Duncan, Mr. Cammons, Mr. Dardano, Mrs. Slay, and Mr. Venker to the Arvada Economic Development Association Board of Directors be approved and ratified.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we have the appointment of city council members to various boards and committees. Well, we, what we've done in the past, let's see how many we've got here. We've got a bunch. Yeah, we just sort of go around.
Everybody do your own. Nope.
Oh, we have, yeah, eight. Started to talk to somebody?
Yes. Bob, do you want to start?
Should I just start with you? I move that Mark Williams be appointed, and you want me to just list these?
Yeah, why don't, yes, that's fine.
On the sheet, Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, E470 Authority alternate, Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority, Northwest Parkway Authority Associate Member alternate, Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, West Connect Coalition, and obviously, the Metro Mayor's Caucus be approved.
That passes seven to zero. Ms. Ford.
I move to appoint Councilmember Dot Miller to the Adams County Economic Development Association, Arvada Municipal Court Judicial Committee, CML Policy Committee, and Smart City Advisory Committee.
That passes seven to zero. Mr. Marriott.
So I move to appoint Mr. Bob Pfeiffer to the Apex Coordinating Committee, the Arvada Fire Protection District Coordinating Committee, the Arvada Transportation Committee, the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Jefferson County R1 Schools Coordinating Committee, the Jefferson Transportation Action and Advocacy Group, and the Smart City Advisory
That passes seven to zero. And I will move to appoint Nancy Ford to the Arvada Center for the Arts and Humanities, the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee, the Arvada Visitor Center Committee as an alternate, and the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. That passes seven to zero.
I move to appoint Councilmember David Jones to the Jefferson County R1 Schools Coordinating Committee, Jefferson County Economic Development Council, Jefferson Parkway Public Highway Authority, and as an alternate to the Jefferson County Community Corrections Board and West Connect Coalition.
Did she mention the E471?
Oh, sorry, I just read it in the suggested motion. Was there a difference?
I should still show you as an E470 alternate.
And as the E470 alternate.
Yeah, thank you.
Would you like more, Councilmember Jones?
That passes seven to zero. Thank you.
I move to nominate Councilmember John Marriott to the Adams County Economic Development Association as an alternate, the Apex Coordinating Committee,
the Apex Coordinating Committee, the Arvada Audit Committee, the Arvada Economic Development Association Board, the Arvada Municipal Court Judicial Committee, CML Policy Committee, the Denver Regional Council of Governments, alternate, the Jefferson County Transportation Action Advisory Group as an alternate, and the Old Town Business Improvement District.
That passes seven to zero. And, Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I move to appoint Councilmember Lauren Simpson to the Arvada Audit Committee, the Arvada Fire Protection District Coordinating Committee, the Arvada Visitor Center Committee, and the Smart City Advisory Committee.
Votes are cast. And that passes seven to zero. Ms. Miller?
I move to appoint Mr. Mark McGough to the Jefferson County Community Corrections Board.
Does it have an employee number?
And we did verify it does not need to be a member of city council, but that passes seven to zero. Okay, I think that concludes the council, Ms. Deeds, for the evening. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Next Monday, we have a workshop on the land development code. We thought we'd give you an easy issue for the workshop for next Monday.
Gee, thanks.
Just for the holidays.
Okay, we, I'm sorry, city attorney, Rachel Morris, anything further?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.